It's ten o'clock, we call this meeting to orders. Item number two is roll call.
Call story. Sanders, I agree.
Here.
Barton, three.
Yeah. Okay, item number three is going to be placed later.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four, we're going to recognize our guest, who passed on his sign and she. As we're doing that, we'll move down to number five, it's new business. Aaron?
I don't have a thing, guys.
This is safety meeting.
Just first like, yeah, safety meetings this week.
And one on Wednesday.
The quarterlies.
And then the nineteenth and the twenty-fifth.
What time does it start Wednesday?
Seven.
Seven thirty.
And if anybody needs to, some of you got my number, well, I think most people have my number. If you need to get ahold of me this week, um, if you want to write this down, use area code four seven nine, four six one, four three six five. My work phone is on the fritz, and so I'm in the process trying to get that fixed. They say it can take up to a week, so, um, just call my personal number when anything comes up. And it's just, can't get the guys out working right now due to the, the rain and the weather and stuff. I mean, I could work them right now, but we got a, we got a few projects to do, but it's, we don't want to get them in the mud, need to eat in the mud, so.
Yeah, just, yeah, the nineteenth, you know, eight, or the seventeenth, Wednesday, the nineteenth and the twenty-fifth. And the nineteenth and the twenty-fifth are at two apart.
Yes, two apart, the OSU station office, yes.
Yes.
So.
Yes, I do. Okay, I want everybody to know that, uh, on the jail payment that we've had for the last two months, that we, uh, did not happen to have anything to cover the short call. In fact, we are four thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety-eight cents to the good. So, and that's not having to touch the quarter percent at all. Uh, from Ja- April to October of last year, it was seventy-seven thousand four forty-three eighty-one that we had to pull out. From April to August was twenty-four thousand eight eighty-four oh eight, which is a big difference, uh, fifty-two thousand five hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eighty cents. Uh, this kind of tells you that the economy is doing better. We didn't have, like I said, pull anything out, so it's really looking a lot better. I hope this continues. It will help everybody, um, the county, the city, and everyone on it. So, I just thought that was good news, everybody probably needs to know that, so.
Sandra, what are those numbers again?
Sorry.
I'm sorry, uh, which one do you want?
The year, the year numbers that we have.
From April to October?
Yeah.
Seventy-seven thousand four hundred and forty-three dollars and eighty-one cents is what we paid out last year.
Okay.
And this year was twenty-four thousand eight eighty-four oh eight from April to August. In the last two months, it's been zero. So we have a plus in the four thousand nine hundred and sixteen dollars and ninety-eight cents.
And that is not even touching that quarter cent.
Quarter percent, correct, yes, the last two months.
It's actually, it's actually contributing forty-nine hundred and sixteen dollars. And we've, I have reached out, I know Rick has reached out, Randy's reached out, and not been able to find where that increases came from, except for, I mean, the sales tax is up, but I don't know if any big things, do you Randy? I mean, I, I know Rick and I have discussed it.
It's up a lot.
It's up a lot.
Well, and you, on the one percent that the county gets, it's up twenty thousand dollars for this month. So, I mean, that's a big jump from eighty thousand to a hundred thousand.
The only thing I can keep contributing to is the oil field work going on down south. I mean, there's a lot of.
Well, the oil field pipeline, uh, construction is way up, uh, and trying to get a house built right now. You're going to have to get in line and wait.
If you go to, uh, Quentin, it's so busy, you can't even get into the gas pump, so, you know, that comes back over here, the food and everything.
Yeah.
But yeah, I think it's the oil field, I've never seen it booming so heavy.
I tell folks it's not going into Tulsa every morning. When you go, I think, I go seventy-one down and hit thirty-one the ones from school traffic, but kidding.
Yeah.
And it's like going to, it's like going into Tulsa in the morning, I mean, honestly.
Yeah.
It ain't, it's little cars, it's big, it's big trucks, that's what it looks like, you're going into, going into Tulsa in the morning.
Well, the trucks and everything, aren't they?
Okay, also, on the Haskell County Industrial Development Authority, uh, I have talked to Bill Cox a few times, and he suggests that we just basically get the, uh, committee together, the members, and have a forward meeting and meet from then. Um, I will get ahold of people, Clark, if you want to help, uh, the members to get that started, and it would be a good time, um, to have it done and find a place, want to have it here in the courthouse. I don't know if it will be after hours for people that's on the board or what, but we do need to get started on that. Uh, and other than that, I do have a gentle lady coming Friday to give me an estimate on the carpet. I have a few other things that we could probably do to help the carpet, uh, in some of the offices. As soon as I get that done, I'll let you know. Also got an email from Adco Insurance, and it's on the accident, uh, when Terry Garland had his, okay. The commissioners, and I don't know if y'all got this email or not, uh, and we'll have to put it on the agenda for next Monday. That's three thousand nine hundred and sixty-four dollars and two cents on the damage of the vehicle. We need to decide if we want to pay, how to pay for that. There's only a little over ten thousand dollars, it's just sitting in a deductible. We can take it out of that, but it's going to throw our deductible less. And then on ten, on yours, there's a legal that came out of the jail that they had to absorb all of that for two years, so there's no deductible on yours.
But have we got the ten thou-? We still owe Matlock that ten thousand.
But there's, there's nothing there to get, because it was all absorbed in that legal matter. For two years, it's going to be locked up on the hanging. They have that, they have to take that and absorb that.
So where, where is the county going to come up with ten thousand so I can get Matlock paid back?
It's not there right now.
I have to pay them.
I understand. That's Rhys Fox wanted to talk to the other day about.
Yeah, I mean, I gotta get.
But, uh.
Got to get them paid, and, and we don't have it, so.
Well, we do need to think about that, like I said, we need to figure out on the, on the, uh, claim, on the truck, so if we can put that down next week and decide, um.
So like, maybe you need to have a prior meeting, get a decision in, in direction of what you're going to do about it.
Right.
Before you meet on it.
Okay.
Uh, back to the Haskell County Trust Authority.
Yes.
Uh, did he mention anything about having an audit?
He said it, there were, it's been several years before that and it's done, that was something that would need to be brought up.
You'll have to, you'll have to have another audit.
Yes. So.
Did we have all the member employees or?
Yes.
Ready to be employed?
I have a, I don't know if I brought a copy with me today, but I can email you a copy, I put one in your basket, the phone number's on it. So, other than that, I think that's all I have today.
Damn. We, um, continue to work fast. We had another one the other night where a trailer and furniture was stolen, um, down around Grassy Lake. Was out at McCurtain on another deal, and, um, was able to cut it off and recover another flatbed trailer loaded down with furniture. Put two in jail for that. We're currently, um, currently assisting as of last night. Sheriff's Office, Stiglaf PD and OSBI have arrested a, um, Stigler public school teacher for indecent acts with a minor child. That teacher is currently in custody, and we're, we are working with the school, um, to follow through with that investigation. Jail stuff is going, is going fairly smooth. We've had a couple little plumbing issues that we're working through and working out. Other than that, everything is, everything is good there. I had, I had the Matlock, um, Matlock bill on my list to discuss this morning. We owe roughly eighteen thousand dollars to Matlock. We've got about eighty-five hundred in insurance money that we haven't spent yet, and we're planning on spending, but we're still nine to ten thousand dollars difference in getting Matlock paid, and that's going to be for the lightning strike that we took to the jail. Um, and we've got to get that, we've got to get that paid, and I think it was undermined in Sanders' understanding that we had ten thousand dollars, or actually thirty or twenty or thirty thousand dollars in account that could be utilized to pay that, uh, remainder of the balance. And I guess that's not, I guess that's not available.
They had to take that and set it aside, and it'll be set aside for two years. And then, after that, basically, if it was settled with between eighteen months, and it was there, you could take it. But it's already been quite a bright end of year right now.
So, that is a, that is something that probably just needed to put on the agenda for next Monday to discuss how we're going to, how we're going to pay that remainder of that balance.
Would they let us make payments on that?
No, they won't pay, it's went long enough that we've got to get it paid. We've got to, we've got to get that thing paid. Um, and it's been one of those arguments, and finally we've got them to adjust everything down, got everything, got everything fixed. Um, insurance has closed theirs, their side of it out. We've paid off most of it, we've got one final invoice that I had to let it itemize everything and send it back. And, um, Mona has the, that insurance money put aside, because we've just been waiting. I know that Sanders has been working on it for the last several weeks, trying to figure out if we can utilize that, that ten thousand dollars, so.
That's, yeah, that's kind of that situation.
But I mean, we, and that, and that, and what she's saying is that goes back to the, the lawsuit that we're currently in, um, and I, I don't see that being resolved anytime soon. I fear that'll be another twelve to eighteen month deal. Before that's resolved. All we're doing is wasting trees right now. I've probably got two boxes full of documents where the attorneys are just corresponding backwards, devotions, so.
On the hot water heater for the jail, we are, uh, sourcing right now to see where we can get the cheapest, not the cheapest one, but the best deal. It'll be the same model and, uh, brand and model number as what was removed or being removed. As soon as, uh, we get that, we'll get it coming, we're just shopping right now.
And I appreciate that.
It takes, it takes about seven, eight days to really shop all the markets to find, but when you can save six or seven thousand dollars, it means it makes a difference.
Yeah, and they're, and they're high dollar, and they're high dollar units. I'm hoping we're, um, next couple of days, we'll be transitioning from air condition to heat out there. So I'm hoping that transition goes, goes pretty smoothly. We do have an issue, and I, and Randy knows the issue that we have sometimes, is it gets so humid inside there, um, when you start making these transitions, and we'll see how, we'll see how it works, but that'll be something we transition to in the next couple of days.
And I did have to call Matt Webster this morning to change over that air to the heat this morning for the courthouse. So probably by this afternoon, I'll, when he did.
Other than that, just honestly appreciate you guys, you guys have been good to the jail and been good to us. We're getting them to struggle, but, um, I think Friday you're coming financially for, for everything going on. Um, one other thing I'd like to mention, I know it's something we've talked about. I'd really like for the commissioners to think about, um, assigning Aaron to us full-time with his part-time payment coming from emergency management, and the other part-time coming from the DEQ grant that we've got. Um, it might not be something that we do this fiscal year, because we've already set budgets, but something that we think about moving forward, because I, I foresee that DE, that DEQ grant continuing, because we are doing what we're supposed to be doing with that, and the, and the program's growing. And if we utilize him half emergency management, half for the DEQ, which is what he's doing anyways, um, we would wind up sending him to the, the Bridge Academy, which would also give us an extra full-time deputy. That if, if we needed a deputy to fill a shift or to cover something, he would be there, but his main duties would be our emergency management along with DEQ. Because our, our emergency management's a part-time position anyways, the DEQ's a part-time position. So you add, you put those two together, it strengthens our numbers, but it also, um, it also helps the county relieve some financial response, financial stress, I believe, so.
Have you put thought together as to, that if you're going to take him a hundred percent of the time, how you're going to get, have to fund him for EMS and have to DEQ?
We would do the same thing that we're doing right now. Those, those positions are.
Be unofficial.
No, those, it would be official, those, those positions are grant positions anyways. So he would still, he would still do his D, he'd still do his emergency management duties, and then he would do the DEQ grant duties. They're both, they're both part-time paid positions. So what we do now is we, we, the county gets a, a, a part-time reimbursement for his salary. All we're doing is saying, hey, the other part of his salary, we would use the part-time position that DEQ allows us to have, and it would be a, it'd be a full-time commission spot. He would just utilize both revenues to do the job that he does. He would do the same thing he does now, the same exact thing he does now, wouldn't change his, wouldn't change his responsibilities at all. I mean, it wouldn't, I mean, he's, that's what he does now. I mean, he does emergency management, and he does the DEQ trash pickup.
To, to send you this, uh, Bridger, did you call it?
Bridge Academy.
Bridge Academy, is that for what purpose?
Well, to make him a full-time certified officer, because he still enforces, he still enforces.
No, I know that, but why does he have to have a, a?
Because if we're going to put him in a full-time spot that CLEAT, the state mandates that he can only, he can only basically carry a badge and gun so many hours a year as a reserve. But if you have him full-time certified, he could carry it all the time, but he would still do the duties that he's doing now. Um, and, and instead of us having to send a full-time deputy out when we have, when we're trash, when we have a trash site cleanup that we have, and let them investigate it, he would be able to take the inmates, he would be able to do his investigation while he was there and prepare the report. Now what we do is they go out and pick it up, he looks at it, we send a full-time deputy out there to do the investigation. So we're doubling our time, because we've already got a guy there, but we're having to send another guy out there to do it. So that's, that's basically the only things that it would change is, is that little bit of responsibility.
To attend the CLEAT training or ever the Bridge Academy for full-time, is it, does he have to be a full-time deputy?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Has to be.
That's what I was getting at.
Has to be on paper, yes.
Okay.
And it's for two months. Yeah, it's, it's actually four days a week for two months, yeah.
Where do you go to, where's that at?
Ada.
Ada?
Yes. But just, if you guys just think about that, we'll, we'll be reapplying for that grant. We're also going to apply for an Attorney General's grant for next year, um, so, but we'll be reapplying for that DEQ grant, and I would like to write in there, um, Aaron's duties in that grant, and see, see what it would do for us. That's just something that you guys can think about, we'd appreciate it. Other than that, I mean that.
Okay, item number four, new business. We'll move on to item number six, approved commissioners for savings in previous meetings.
All right, make motion on number six.
Sanders, I agree.
Yes.
Barton, three.
Yeah.
Call story.
Yes.
Okay, item number seven, approved blanket POs for the league. The South Side Department, we had one for three hundred and fifty dollars to Total Express. Now the SSF, we have a thousand dollars to Fleet Court. And now the SCA, we have one for sixteen hundred dollars to Performance Foods. And now the SJEF, we have one for six hundred dollars to Fleet Court. And then we do the blanket POs for this league. I second it.
Barton, three.
Yeah.
Call story.
Yes.
Sanders, I agree.
Yes.
Okay, item number eight will be discussed, consider, approved detention service for school enterprises, eighteen, nineteen years. And this is just, this is another one of these where you send a juvenile to him.
Yes.
I think we ought to pay it like the last one of those deals, we, the one, usually we don't have to.
I'll make that motion.
I second it.
Barton, three.
Yeah.
Sanders, I agree. Another call story.
And they get twenty-six dollars a day. Okay, item number nine, we discuss, consider approving October month report for court clerk's office. Says October.
Commissioner, while you're doing that, I got one more thing that rocked my mind, if, if I can, just for a second.
Yeah, go ahead.
Back to the auction, the county auction, Sandra.
Uh-huh.
I spoke to the state auditor's office last week, because we're fixing to sell a bunch of cars and do a gun sale. And due to the fact that, um, we are an election year, but only have one election, we're able to have the auction. So there, when I talk to the auditor, they're, we're able to sell anything, um, that we need to sell. So we're fixing to get some vehicles sold, but they did say that we can have the county auction and move forward whenever you guys are ready.
See, when we called Kentucky, they said no, but.
That's true, because there was, there was two at the time.
Yeah.
It was, um, Commissioner Storey and Commissioner McLaren. But now it's just, it's Commissioner Storey's the only one, there's two commissioners who can make a decision without an election. So I just wanted to, I talked to Cindy Byrd last week. About selling of the vehicles.
Let's start looking into that thing.
He says October on the agenda, but it's, this is September's.
Need to, uh, make a motion to table it till next week on number nine.
I second that.
Sanders, I agree.
Yes.
Call story.
Yes. Okay, item number ten, we discuss, consider to certify four bonded persons on depository account. Kell Dixon, Gayla Orne, Stephanie Stowfield, Chelsea Bloxton.
Make a motion on number ten.
I'll second it.
Sanders, I agree.
Yes.
The E, call story.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, item number eleven, we sign appropriation, transfer appropriation to have received the POs.
He's been pretty selling. Sell air, we can sell, period, much junk, sell. Two big buses that are outside. Four, we'll share with the man that's hot. Other guys. Selling that black. Selling two sport three wheels. Hopefully we're selling that, uh, next charger should be, we need, we want to talk to him. Is that, is, is, you have a good, good problem here? Yeah, it's strange, but. It's got, it's got a new motor and transmission, but it walks all over the road. It's had two argonist thousand, all three three five. It's got a new transfer engine, motor and transmission. This week. Although they, he's working, he's working. I like to handle this four three vehicle. Apparently, several of them starting to reach in that black car. Like, I mean, he's really, I mean, he's playing, I'm betting, see if they make it. Okay, I'll give you, I'll let you know the name.
I don't know if y'all seen it this weekend, but they had a good crowd at the Roundup Club.
Oh my goodness, yes.
They had over, I, I don't know how, I mean, over two hundred pets, if I, when I found, I heard, they were up fifty from week four.
It was raining the whole time, late the whole time.
They having rain?
Yeah.
They were pulling, they were pulling rigs out with the tractors, they had two tractors going, pulling semi's out and everything.
There was V, there was trucks and trailers everywhere.
They had, they had them all the way up, all the way up, well, to, um, Gordon's Construction's office building. Big rigs all the way up to Gordon's.
There was one or two down at Cell Bar.
Yeah, Cell, Cell Bar. They, they had so much traffic, Saturday night, went through town, and, um, you couldn't go nowhere either. There was cowboys everywhere. So the revenue that it brought to the community was huge. It'll take six weeks to get the arena back in shape, it's a bad way.
There's a lot of difference in the economy now than there was years ago.
Should these not be on separate deals? Or you just put these all on one?
Yeah.
Tim, did y'all investigate that grease trap?
Christina has looked for it, and I do not, I think she thought she found it. I do not know, Randy. I got busy on two stone property cases this week, and a stolen cattle case, and I have not followed up with that. I'll knock it down.
I think we could, uh, have them produce a maintenance schedule, things that need to be done periodically out there. I know things slip by because that ash maker that we purchased a couple of years ago, it's supposed to have our filter changed every ninety days or something like that. And they were having problems with it when I went out there to investigate, the filter had never been changed.
Was that, that was a while back, right? Yeah, we, we got it.
It's working fine now, to my knowledge, but, uh, it seemed like to me that, that grease trap will have to be in a routine periodic basis and then develop some kind of a, a, uh, maintenance plan.
Yeah, I agree.
That somebody has to sign off that it wasn't, it cleaned out or investigated or something.
I'm mad.
Keep your problem from happening again.
I'm asking if she found the grease trap. I know she mentioned it, I do not want her to say it. Yeah, go, yeah, go through it, just clean it up, it's in, it's in that. And then if you have, if you have something you wanna add, add it in there.
Well, they get forty-seven cents, we got fifty-five.
All right, bye. Okay, bye.
Fifty-five and a half. It worked one time. I actually want to, I was forty-seven.
Okay, I understand.
I think you haven't heard back from the auditor.
Yeah, they called, we talked to them after granting, she said victim, twenty-four.
Okay, are the auditors gonna come back and talk to us, though?
No, I'm talking to-
You're talking to the judge, yeah, okay.
All right, need a motion on item number eleven.
I'll make a motion on eleven. Yes.
Barton Flery?
Yes.
Paul Story?
Yes.
Two seconds, man. Sorry.
All right, item number twelve to the jury, and I'll make that motion.
Second.
Second for Sandra.
Paul Story?
Sandy Bluffer? Yes.